All right, good evening. I'd like to call the September 11th, 2017 Shakopee School Board meeting to order. Sarah, would you please take the role?
Armin, Hallid.
Here.
Nikki Eamon.
Here.
Pas.
Here.
Romanowski.
Here.
Tucker.
Here.
And Swanson.
Good evening. Uh, we will move on to item number two, which is a new addition to our agenda, the Pledge of Allegiance. Here it is.
Yeah, uh, before we stand up and engage in the Pledge of Allegiance, I had approached the board and asked them, uh, if they would consider adding the Pledge of Allegiance to our agenda. I think it's something appropriate for a school district to do. They were all very supportive of that, especially considering it's 9/11 today. I thought that it was a very appropriate date for us to start doing the pledge and to do it regularly at every school board meeting. And I also, on behalf of, uh, you know, lost, uh, lost servicemen like my father, Sergeant Major Charles Anger of the U.S. Army, and, uh, other veterans in our community feel that it's a very appropriate thing for us to do to engage in the Pledge of Allegiance at every school board meeting from here out. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, item number three. We are Shakopee Schools' good news items. I would like to call up Mr. Keith Gray, Director of Human Resources, and he is a special announcement for us.
Well, this evening, we have Derek Vowle with us, and Derek's our new principal at Sweeney Elementary. We were really fortunate to find a great candidate like Derek. He's a principal, he was a principal at Cannon Falls for five years, fifth grade teacher at Farmington for eight, has a master's and specialist degree from St. Mary's, bachelor's degree from Minnesota State University, and quite a few licenses too. We've got a principal, superintendent in elementary and math license. One of the things that Derek said in one of his cover, his cover letter, that he has an uncompromising view that all students can learn, given a positive environment that welcomes exploration and enhances student confidence. And he really believes that it's a principal's job, it's a principal's job to create that environment. One of his references, I think, is maybe, you know, it pretty sums it up by, "I've been in the educational long time and have never seen a better leader, principal or colleague." So, we feel extremely fortunate to have Derek as our new principal, so.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Keith. So, uh, yeah, I'm just absolutely delighted to be part of Shakopee Schools. It's, uh, it's kind of surreal. Um, I feel like there's been some, uh, some, a bit of a whirlwind these past few weeks, but, you know, I really feel like I'm starting to settle in. The staff, the community, the kids have been extremely welcoming, and I just, I'm so appreciative of that. Um, you know, it's, it's, it's nice to be able to be in a school and in a district where you get, you feel so welcomed, even knowing that, you know, I'm, I'm expected to lead a building where I started the same day as teachers. But it's been, it's been absolutely amazing. Uh, I thank you all for the opportunity to be here, and I look forward to, you know, leading Sweeney Elementary and being part of the Shakopee School District. So, thank you.
I say to everybody.
Any other questions or? No questions, but if you're ready for them, turkey.
Yeah.
Take that offline. All right. Let's move on to, oh, item 3.2, successful start of the school year. Do you want to go here?
Yes, sir. I just wanted to quickly comment on what a great start we've had to the school year. Uh, we visited, oh, probably between 250 and 300 classrooms last week, uh, to check in, made it to every single building, uh, very exciting things going on. So proud of our kids and, uh, of our, especially our staff members for all the great things going on already. The first week of the school year is extremely challenging. As an elementary principal, Derek will, uh, subscribe to the fact that we're just trying to get everybody in the door, fed, and on the right bus and home. At the end of the day, our goals are not high, but, uh, but it, it was an extremely successful start. There's great learning going on. Can't wait to get back into the classrooms and just want to thank all of our staff and our community for helping us out to get, uh, the school year off to a great start.
Excellent. Okay, we'll move on to item four, consideration of the agenda as presented. Intertend a motion if there are no additions.
No additions.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, moved by Matt, second by Mary. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Item five, consent items, which we have a significant number of consent items today.
Yeah.
Uh, we do have one individual in the House who's on our consent item agenda. I am Connor. Happy birthday.
Thank you.
Um, if there are no other additions, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve consent as presented.
So.
Moved. Second.
Uh, moved by Sean, second by Matt. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by five by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. And we will jump to, if you're following along, page seven. We're going to go to item number six, which is old business discussion items. And Ashley, our communications supervisor, going to come up and talk about the Citizens' Communications Advisory Committee.
Yes. Hello, everyone. All right, so, uh, just wanted to provide you an update on where we are with the Communications Committee. We've received a total of 22 applications. Out of all of those applicants, 50% have lived in Shakopee 12 years or more. Given the high level of interest that we had, the selection process was really, really difficult because everyone brought so much to the table individually. Unfortunately, we weren't able to select all of the candidates, but I will say that increased the number of committee members that we ended up having. Originally, we had planned on maybe five or six, but we selected nine committee members. So, since we're dealing with communications, the more the merrier. Ideas are welcome. Um, but out of those selected, I'll just hit a few of the high points for you. Um, we have representation on the elementary level and the secondary level. Um, a lot of our applicants have experience in special education as well as ed 28, which will be important so that we can reach our entire student population. Uh, we also have experience from people who are, um, one person is a special education teacher. We have another person who lives in the district but is a principal in North Minneapolis. Um, and we also have a lot of people who have communication experience, even though that wasn't a requirement, but it's nice that some people bring that to the table as an addition. We also have someone from Community Ed. So, all in all, the committee members will help us reach a larger audience, which is, um, of course beneficial. So, in total, the committee will have 15 members. That includes myself, Communication Specialist Crystal McNally, Sean, Toni, Mary, and also Del Anderson, as the president. That was a lot, sorry.
When's your first meeting?
It's Tuesday, October 3rd, and the first meeting will be two hours. Since we have a larger committee than originally planned, we want to have enough time so that everyone can provide feedback and make sure that they feel their voices are heard. And the second meeting is also slated for two hours as well. And then after the first, second meetings, we'll kind of take it from there, depending on the fill of the group, as far as the day of the week that we meet and the length of the meetings.
And as far as the acceptance, the?
Everyone has officially accepted now. Yes. Um, one person, this morning, I was still waiting on one person to let me know, and she has since responded. So, we're good to go. And the names will be posted on our website, which is on Communications.
Any questions for Ashley?
I'm so excited for this committee to start. I think it's just going to be a fabulous addition to, uh, what we do and we ensure that we are communicating effectively with our committee.
Okay. For the update.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to 6.2, and we'll ask our Dan and testing minister here, if they'll also get to come and join us to talk about.
Well, we wrote this down a long time ago, this date, September 14th. You know, this Thursday, we're actually going to have our first public listening and input session. And we've had other public meetings, and you guys have been talking about this since, actually, uh, probably January when we first started popping up, or even before then on the agenda. So, what I wanted to do is just talk a little bit about, um, what the process is going to be that night. And this might be at first, I'm not going to pop up any numbers, no charts, graphs, just going to talk for a couple minutes, all right? Is that extremely disappointing?
Sarah wouldn't let you turn it off. Is that what that rule is?
She just turned it off. Okay, so, and I also want to talk a little bit about the, the feedback that we've been getting. So, first, you know what? I'm going to give you the feedback. I went through all the, we've gotten about 45 or so just email reach, reach outs, very few calls, I think. Gary might have taken a couple, but, um, here's some of the, of those 45, you're still going to get some numbers from me. A third of them, about 15 of them, are people just saying, "Our neighborhood's changed a lot, consider that when you're, you're making your decision." "My kids have transitioned a lot, had, heard that, consider that when you're making your decision." Thirteen of them just said, "I like this one." No reason, just like it. Um, a couple discussed, it's kind of a unique situation in those that are on the committee that Angela could speak to. Some of our seventh graders could wind up in a situation where they go to five schools in five years because of the way it could play out. And so, we've heard a number of people give feedback on that. And there's a couple of things over here in here where it's very, where as much as you try to think you're seeing everything, you don't see everything. And so, having that broad perspective is actually very helpful. And so, that's one, and if you, I'll even, I'll play out that scenario for you. I'm a fifth grader. I went to sixth grade, actually, you're a current seventh grader, so two years ago you were a fifth grader. You switched from five to six, then you switched from six to seven under our current arrangement. And some of our seventh graders right now would be slotted to switch junior highs, depending on which scenario would be. So, they'd switch from seventh to eighth theoretically, and then they would switch from eighth to ninth with our configuration change. So, some families who are, um, hit that way, they're seventh grader, they brought that to us, which we didn't initially see. So, there's a few other things like that as well, where it really helps us, again, to have that perspective. Everybody's a unique lens for how it hits them. Other preferences, based on school layouts, how their neighborhood felt like it was cut off from others, minimizing travel time, they want to go to a newer school, feedback on, um, walking distances for the junior highs, and some of the complications that come from those two schools really having, if you drew the, the circumference around those schools, or the, you'd see that there's some overlap in those walking distances, so a little bit of confusion around there. Questions on what demographic balance looks like, start times, consider moving the least number of people. Um, they, there was another question, you know, I talked about that seventh grade situation where some students might wind up with that extra change. Um, there are some fifth grade families that are, uh, could wind up, current fourth graders that could wind up moving in fifth grade, that kind of almost made the same comment, saying, "We've been in the same school for this many years, we want to finish at this school." Heard that a number of times. And then, um, some concerns about, uh, kids and how they, uh, might have extra struggles with change. Um, comments, and kind of woven throughout was just, "We like or love our current school and we want to stay there," was a lot. Questions on, "Why am I not going to the school that's closest to my house?" Um, and a couple questions on how the new developments might impact. So, that's kind of the flavor of the messages, okay? Um, and then the press, any questions on that? Okay.
I just want to comment, we've gotten back to every single one of those. We've, we've tried to get back to everybody that has contacted us, and, uh, and we've really appreciated the dialogue and the conversations.
Yeah, yep, I actually have two on my desk right now that I lost messages with, but otherwise, everybody's been, uh, called, and I spoke to them majority of them. Um, the press, and Angela, feel free to add anything if you want as well.
The only thing I would add is the scenario you brought up about the different kids, um, that have moved multiple times. Dave really did a really nice job digging into that and finding out, how many moves would that be per scenario? So, scenario one is like 255 kids, correct?
That's like 222, I think it is.
Yeah, and then, like, to B, it's like 50, 63 or 58, I've got my numbers wrong.
We're both right around 60.
But, yeah, so he's done some nice work and shared that with the committee as well about that. So.
And so, it's a nice segue into what we're going to do on Thursday. There's kind of a balance between, we had three hours as a committee, plus if anybody did homework or time, and we wanted to make sure that people understood it wasn't just an arbitrary draw of the lines, and to see the effort that goes into trying to do this based on the criteria that we have. There's a balance between that and making sure we don't overwhelm people, and we have plenty of time to answer questions. So, the, the general setup of the session, it's 90 minutes long, 6:30 to 8:00, this Thursday at West Junior High Auditorium, will be about 20 minutes. Gary will welcome everybody, talk about what the format's going to be, and then I'll do about whatever time he gives me left, of at least 15 minutes to, um, maybe 16.
Just cutting my time.
Yeah. To talk about the process that we've gone through, the process technically, and then the process for how it's been out here and even what we've been discussing. The way, we're going to, and this is feedback from a really excellent group of parents that contributed to that, um, committee work as well, and they, a lot of this structure, excuse me, is based on their feedback. We talked about presenting less than the three working scenarios, and they said, "Nope, present all three." We talked about how we wanted to take questions, and we discussed open mic versus written questions versus how we would do that. That group said, uh, written questions was a better way to go. It would give more people a chance to contribute. And what, um, oh shoot, did we have it? I left it on my desk.
No, maybe.
So, what we're going to do is have a form like this that just says, if you want to put your name, name is optional, your phone number's optional, what schools your, your kids go to, and then if you have a question or feedback. And then what we will do is, we're, right now, I think I have somebody, four or five of the parent task force members are, are going to be, um, the only ones that handle this. So, it won't be the district, no district employee, no board members, just parents will be handling these, and they'll be consolidating them for us. And if there's not a ton, they'll just be reading those questions. But if there's a lot of the same, they'll consolidate, and they will actually pose the questions. So, we won't get these until the end of the night, and the reason we would want them in case there's something that we want to call somebody and follow up on. So, it won't, the idea was, we're not fixing which questions were asked and what the feedback is, so the parents said that that was a good plan as well. I understand that, well, then upfront will be, the plan right now is for me, Gary, Crystal, and Ashley, for board members to be there, but to be listeners at that session. And I think you want to talk about how that looks for open meeting laws or how that works?
Yeah, just know that the role for the school board members is to listen, um, not to, to lead or facilitate any portion of the meeting. And if you're not able to make it that night, we will be videotaping it, and you'll have access to all of that, the information, and both the taped version of the meeting.
Because the goal is for you to get as much information as you can, to hear that broad range of perspectives, and to make the best decision you can, and then for Gary as well to ultimately make a recommendation to the board on that. Some specific things that we'll, we'll be doing is there will be in the, the foyer of the auditorium right outside or lobby, or whatever you call that, we're going to have blown up copies of the, uh, eight of them, right? The current and, and the junior high and elementary scenarios blown up. And we're going to have some principals out there in the lobby as well, that if people want to actually engage in a conversation or have more questions about how to read the scenarios, they'll be out there as well to do that.
And they can do that in lieu of being in the auditorium if they prefer to talk to those principals at that time. So, it's another way to provide feedback.
Yep. Um, the, uh, task force also said they want to make sure we show some of the effort that goes into it, but not too much detail. We will have copies there, but we're not, we've, we've heard before that we make too many colored copies. So, it's a balancing act between providing all that, and some people are going to print their own and have already done the homework, so we're just guessing. We're going to guess, but we don't want people to feel like they're not getting the information they need to be able to, uh, participate the way they want to as well. And all this information is, is in that attendance area information center online as well, so people will have access that way.
Dave, a question on that. Do you have any metrics into how many people have decided to visit that site and actually book their address? Do you have any way of knowing how old, what it's been?
I can look into that. I know we have access to do that, like, on our YouTube pages, but I'll have to look into that as far as the website, to see how many links are on that specific page.
And most of the people I've spoken to were aware of it and had been on there, you know, and Ashley and Crystal have done a ton here over the last few weeks especially, leading up to this with postcards and on the main website, and there's something posted on the, you know, there's an article, a commentary from Gary online right now, and it'll be in the printed paper next week regarding the process as well. So, what else am I missing?
Other pieces, if anybody can't make the meeting, plenty of other ways online to give us feedback, and like we said, we're, we're replying to every single person that reaches out to us. We really, our goal is to hear what the public says on this, and we know, again, that boundary changes are a very difficult thing for people, but we want to get as much information as we can to make a recommendation, and, and then also to look, are there other options we can do within that recommendation? Because like Dave said, some things have come forward that we didn't think of already. So, thanks to the task force and to the community members for pointing those things out to us. That's why we are doing this process.
And then one thing we, sorry, Mary, go ahead.
If you want to re-share a few people of changes, my daughter went to four different schools in four years, and she graduated with high honors.
All right, so maybe that's the, the plan.
Yeah, that's a good point, though.
Yeah.
And, and yeah, the, the five change people, you know, within that change, there would have been three changes anyway, but it's still, we understand what they're sharing for sure.
Yeah, and, and related to that, there are some, some of the slides at the beginning of the, the 15 or so minutes that I'll have, and this was from the task force as well. He's really doing a good job of answering the why, because even a couple people I've talked to, "Why are you doing this?" Or, "Leave us alone," or, "Don't do this." There's kind of no choice. And we'll put up some of that growth history that we've done before, just showing what the boundaries looks like when we had about 4,000 kids compared to what it needs to look like when you have 8,000 plus kids. There's, it just, it has to be done. And then the last thing that I have on my list is, we do have that second listening and input session on October 23rd, and the, the general feeling was that it would be different, but we're not sure how that would be different. And if we want to look at going from the three scenarios to the two, or the three to one at that time, we'll take the feedback that we get this time, make any adjustments that we need to, and then maybe one just comes forward from there and we take feedback on that. But we will, will want to talk about that and make that decision after this, this meeting and see how it goes. Okay? Anything?
Dave?
Yeah?
Uh, questionnaire, you know, so if they, if somebody's there and they don't get their answers, are you going to post that on the website as well? And just in case, you know, if you're watching, you can hear all the questions and answers that you guys, you know, if you're going back to just the individual, you know, who left their number or whatever. What if that's a valid question for everyone else? Maybe it's.
Sure. We started, and it's very minimal right now, FAQ, so.
But we, we can build on that, and we will, if the question-answer applies.
Yeah, good question.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
And I'd like to say thank you to task force. They were really engaged, um, and a lot of them have never been on a task force before, so that was nice, to get a different perspective from different people. And, um, it was two day, two times that we met, and it went really well, really well, we, quite a few people.
And what was nice is there were people there who, clearly, they, they know what they want, and, but they also provided us good feedback beyond that. It was, it's actually, I think, as, as, I'm taking a leap here, as fun as a nighttime committee could be on a tenant's service, I think, we did it, right, Angel?
You did, you did amazing.
No, we, we did it.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
But they may have had an added, but they're very appropriate and very respectful to the process, and so, I agree.
And I think they really thought how hard this is.
Right.
Like, you're not going to make everybody happy, and I think they all really were able to grasp onto the fact that this is not easy. And they probably were thankful they're not Dave. We're all thankful.
Okay.
But Dave, you did great, Joe.
Thank you. Thanks.
All right, good. Any other questions for Dave?
Thanks, Dave.
All right, see you Thursday. All right, number seven, we do not have any old business action items, nor do we have any new business discussion or new business action. Uh, we have no other. So, we'll go to 11 committee reports. I see we've got just some basic minutes that are on there, um, so I guess we'll see if there's any comments about the policy committee meeting.
Uh, no, I mean, we, we talked about, we had a good meeting, and we think we're going to actually open up to a learning session, and we're going to have a, Suzanne and I talked, and we're, we have some things to work on, and I think it would be best for the whole board to hear on, because we thought we'll maybe put in as procedure instead of changing the NSBA policy. That's, well, that's, I guess, part of what Suzanne, all of us should talk about, so we can hear her out as a, as an overall board instead of just our, our group.
And that's specifically with reference to the?
412.
412.
Yes. Yep. Okay. And we also did talk about eight, oh, I think it's eight or two. Um, given Brian, it's with, in regards to the, uh, all the laptops and iPads and everything else, how we can sell them back or, you know, get a, get a, get a better, or, and the policies date in 2005, so we're quite past that. So, what we're going to do is, we've, we've had Brian kind of clear to resell them back, but then going forward, we're going to rewrite it, so he can nitpick when there's one or two, um, that he can, we can sell maybe through, I mean, we'll start something on our, on our website where people can put a bidding process on some of the, whether it's office furniture, iPads, some form like that. Um, because Gary, you mentioned you kind of, you had that done via? Yeah, um, basically, the issue is, we, when a district runs into obsolete equipment, what do you do with it? Well, you can't just give it away, if it has some value to people in the public. So, what we need to do is establish an obsolete equipment policy in which we can make that equipment, furniture, I'll give you another example, we've got some old gym floor, and we have the same situation as in Brodomazepa. So, we had people in the community that were interested in buying sections of this gym floor to, you know, for woodworking or decoration or whatever, so these things that may be obsolete to us may have some value to those in the public. So, what we need to do is establish a policy in which we get some revenue, and we give back to those people in the community that are interested in those obsolete pieces. And that can range from technology to old wood floors, and so, and furniture and things like that. So, um, the plan is to put together a, a obsolete equipment policy, maybe have a link on our website so that people can look on and see, and put bids on different items so that we can, uh, handle it that way.
All right, any others? All right, Finance Committee met, uh, at 7:00 AM last Friday. Treasury, any update on that?
Um, just a, a couple of things. Uh, we've got CFAC tomorrow night, Citizens Financial Advisory Council is, is meeting tomorrow night, so we were covering off a few things, um, that we're going to be talking about tomorrow night, confirming that agenda, and then just our budget timeline document, continuing to work throughout. Suzanne's doing great work, or Suzanne's back there behind, behind that. Uh, putting together just a, how we build an annual budget and an overall budget update that we have, um, we have switched that from having Finance Committee meetings before the business meetings, we do them before the learning sessions now, and we'll. And we'll present the budget at the learning session. Being later in the month helps us close out the books a little bit better than this early in the month. So that's why we'll be presenting that in two weeks.
Any other committee meetings?
We had a personnel committee meeting tonight prior to this meeting because now that we have an HR director, a finance director, and a superintendent in place, we do need to start the negotiation process with our groups. So we've just, tonight, talked about starting the process with a timeline.
Any other committees? All right. We'll move on to item 12, recognition of visitors before meeting. Are there any visitors that would like to speak? Please come up and vote for clipboard. Okay. We'll move on to item 13, which is upcoming meetings and important dates. Obviously, those items for September 11th are covered. We know about CFAC for tomorrow night, bond oversight on Wednesday. And as Dave lived to, we've got an attendance area, public listening and input session on Thursday.
And again, just, you know, check the asterisk at the bottom of the agenda. While in form, the board may be in attendance at that meeting that is not a board meeting. It's a public listening session, just to clarify.
And I won't bother to read everything else, because that's all coming up. Lots can change here. Lots going on, lots can change.
Do you want to highlight the September 22nd, though?
That may be a slightly... Yes. September 22nd is in fact our Hall of Fame luncheon activities. And that evening, they made a football game. Alumni was homecoming.
And the good folks at the Alumni Association are putting on their annual event.
Alumni Association's annual event, correct. And I'm not... Did we provide updates at all as far as how somebody can be involved with that? If they want to attend, can you those?
I believe you can.
The information is on our website. The Alumni Association has its own webpage. And also, some information was sent out today, district-wide, and also to the Alumni Association, and also to parents in the district. And it's also on social media.
They are also putting forth the old-school buggies they used to wear. And they are being sold for $2 at Anchor Bank, Bellis Corns, and Bill's Thogery. And then I think Millie is actually selling them in the, I think, lunchtime at the high school. I think the buggers are being delivered tomorrow meeting. I think they're supposed to be shipped by...
They're already available.
Are they here?
Yes. They're all available.
$2?
$2.
$2.
I think it's taming the cat or something. I don't remember what it is.
I don't remember what the bug is.
Something like that.
Or something like that.
All right. Well...
Catfight.
Catfight.
Yes.
That's what you saw when you looked at it? That's okay. All right. We'll do a quick, around the horn for administrative team. Keith, anything from you? Okay. Dave?
In addition to this work, maybe some of you know that your kids actually... Our testing season's starting today. So we'll have some kids taking a MAM test starting today across the district. And some of our second graders will be taking the COGAP test, the cognitive abilities test as well. So it just doesn't stop. So there we go.
All right. Thanks for that. Suzanne?
You know, I think that one you've covered.
Okay. Mr. Greeley?
We're good.
Ashley?
Just a few notes. We'll continue communicating information about the attendance areas. We'll post the videos online from both learnings... From both listening and input sessions. Early dismissal day is coming up the 1st, September 27th. The principals have been helping us out tremendously and sending the information out to parents in their weekly newsletters. It was also included in Gary's back-to-school letter to parents. And we will be sending out additional information to parents this week so that they have that covered.
Good. All right. Sarah, you did? Don?
I'm good.
Mary?
I'm good.
Angela?
I'm good.
No, thank you.
I'm good.
One more.
Yes?
One, a big thanks to Cub Foods for donating food for our back-to-school meeting with our teachers, a very successful meeting. And so, big thanks to Cub Foods for doing that for us.
All right. Excellent. Thanks. I have nothing. With nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
I can.
All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Go same side. We are adjourned.